Okay, it's seven oh eight and call this meeting to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Are there any adjustments to the agenda this evening?
Yes, we have two addendum. Under three new business, letter B, accepted additional resignation received Friday, June ninth, twenty twenty-three from P E G S R teacher John Klein, effective as of May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, also letter B, as in Victor, district financial audit agreement documents from G, Hearn, and Pies, L L P, are provided for board review and recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Now we need to adopt the agenda with the agenda. Do I have a motion?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adopting the agenda as presented this evening, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Our agenda is here. Letter C, information proposals, we don't have anything scheduled for June. So that brings us to letter D, which is public forum. Please remember there is a five-minute time limit. Legal restrictions limit the amount of board comment and interaction during this portion of the meeting. And I have a few forms in front of me. The first one is Rebecca Cohen, please.
Good evening, I am speaking tonight on, in reference to letter N, under the consider approval of renewal district for building suit, building student intervention programs and professional development for this twenty-two, twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-three, twenty-four school year as presented, letter number four, P E B C, in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars. I believe two months ago, this was this amount was added to, or their, their, this company was brought up as a a very real concern as their website promotes CRT, critical race theory. For those that do not know what critical race theory is, according to britannica.com, CRT is an intellectual and social movement and loosely organized framework of legal analysis based on the premise that race is not, not a natural biologically founded feature, grounded feature of physically distinct subgroups of human beings, but a socially constructed or culturally invented category that is used to oppress and exploit people of color. And according to the americanbar.com, CRT recognizes that racism is codified in law, embedded in structures, and woven into public policy. CRT rejects claims of meritocracy or colored blindness. CRT recognizes that it is the systemic nature of racism that bears primary responsibility for reproducing racial inequality. And according to Ibram Kendi, on how to be anti-racist, the definition of racism is a collection of racist policies that lead to racial inequity that are substantiated by racist ideas. Now, if any of you can tell me what racism is, I still don't have any idea after the leading expert just gave me that definition. He also said, the only, only remedy to past discrimination is present discrimination. The only remedy to present discrimination is future discrimination. Now, in my opinion, you can replace the word discrimination with hate. So let's read that again. The only remedy to past hate is present hate. The only remedy to present hate is future hate. Well, gee, we'll get over this soon, won't we? Now, some would argue that we need CRT because we want our children and other people to have equality, that we do not want them to be discriminated against because they have other needs, other special needs. But according to the Americans with Disabilities Act, everyone with a disability is protected with, under the categories of employment, transportation, public accommodations, communications, access to state and local government programs and services. Meaning they're already protected and you don't need CRT to do that for you. Um. You know, CRT is a slippery slope. You, you start in on this and we could get into some really bad situations very quickly. Inclusionhub.com, what is diversity equity inclusion? DEI encompass encompasses the symbolic relationship, philosophy, and culture of acknowledging, embracing, supporting, and accepting those of all racial, sexual, gender, religious, and socionomic backgrounds, among other differentiating, differentiations. To quote from the Hill, what do we really mean by diversity, equity, inclusion by Robert Maranato, Michael Hilt Mills, and Catherine Salmon dated eleven, seven, twenty-two? With rapidity and stealth, the E I E ideology has come to replace the classical liberal values of merit, fairness, and equality in the academic, professional organizations, media, government, and large tech companies. Who designated DEI? Why DEI, not another sense of lot, set of laudable goals? Does equity refer to opportunity or result? There, there's so much to, to CRT. And bringing a company in who, on their front page, says that they are for CRT and reducing whiteness, to me, is just borrowing trouble. Thank you.
Yes. Mr. Tony Gouler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, superintendents, Kramer, thank you for the opportunity to be heard. First off, shortly after the last election, it was suggested to you that you might be moving to make changes a little too quickly. And to paraphrase, you should consider setting aside your campaign promises for a more compromised approach. I'd like to share with you a quote from our current United States representative, who was elected on the same night some of you were. Quote, compromise is what got sent in this mess. The same Gosha County citizens who voted for that representative and sent her to fight on our behalf in Washington, DC are the very same citizens who voted for some of you and for the same reason. We sent her to Washington, DC to fight for our freedom and for our children's future. And we voted for you to do that right here where we live. You were not elected by the adherents of Marxist revolutionary theory or woke ideal, woke ideologues. And I doubt you had any support whatsoever from those who subscribe to the pseudo sociological problem known as DEI. With that, I wish to address our school district contract with P E B C, birthed with financing from the Ford Foundation, which at best can be described as an organization that promotes anti-American communism, their anti-American capitalism. The P E B C's list of allies reads as a who's who in the world of Marxist revolutionary theory and activism. P E B C strategic partners list only provides a partial picture of its organizational relationships, which by extension include the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation, the George Soros-funded Tights Foundation, the W K Kellogg Foundation, which is another link back to George Soros and Tights, Unidos U S, which was formerly known as La Raza, a supremacist group. Who'd have thought that Marxism and fascism would be kissing cousins out there on the left? But there they are. Which yet again brings us back to George Soros through the Open Society Foundation. P E B C also openly promotes the National Equity Project, which is its link to Black Lives Matter, which, as you may know, has stated publicly that they, they want to achieve the disruption of the nuclear family to achieve their goals. So what could we possibly, what could P E B C possibly have to offer us? P E B C is an organization steep in that movement that would seek to convince our children that they are racist by virtue of whiteness, disadvantaged by virtue of their non-whiteness, that it's undesirable for boys to be masculine or for girls to be feminine. Why would we ever seek any services whatsoever from an organization dedicated to the very things that we would spend our lifetimes to protect our children from? If we've already entered into a contract with P E B C, I, I would urge you to cancel it. If there's a penalty to be paid because of it, let's pay it. And let's just chalk it up to the cost of the learning experience. None of the information I'm sharing with you this evening comes from any obscure conspiracy websites or anti-public education blogs. The organizational relationships with the P E B C that I'm sharing with you have been lifted from their website and the links provided within that site. Following those links takes you down the rabbit hole of communist Marxist educational theory repackaged for a new generation and the seemingly innocuous jargon of diversity, equity, and inclusion training and social emotional learning. Now, the social emotional learning aspect is particularly interesting. It's remarkable in that it promises to provide teachers with a method to instill good morals and behavior in our children from a completely secular perspective and approach. In other words, once the teachers are successfully made aware of their ingrained white culture biases and repent of that original sin, then they'll be able to practice psychology without a license and guide our children into being good people without God. Well, at least without the God of creation. A God in the form of the state will likely be provided later. Out here, we're engaged in a war we didn't start, but we are engaged and we expect to be engaged as well. Parents and families of the children who you've been entrusted with educating are engaged as best as they can while they continue to live their lives. We even find ourselves having to refuse to purchase products from Anheuser-Busch or spend entertainment dollars with Disney or shop at Target because these companies make clear their contempt for the values and seek to instill in our children. You're all aware of this. So how could we? How could we, for a moment, think that would be okay for us to spend our cash dollars with this kind of an organization? Continuing to press forward with a bad idea doesn't improve a bad idea. I choose to believe that if you support this, it's because you weren't fully informed about what P E B C is and what their relationships are. And not because you've given your assent to this plan to reprogram our children to align their thinking and actions with a neo-Marxist movement. I will believe the former to be true unless you give me reason to suspect the latter. And if you were indeed caught unawares, the good news is it's never too late to do the right thing. So I would, again, I, all the information I've shared with you is readily available. I would encourage you to do the right thing and know that you'll have to support this community in doing it. Thank you again for your time and service.
Okay, letter E, under recommended actions, is our consent agenda. Oh, are there any items in the consent agenda this evening that a member wishes to call?
If I could, Chairman, Chairman Sussex, I just like, I have a question about that, the Wyoming School Board Association.
Would you like to pull it and then we can revisit it? Okay. Okay, are there any other items on the consent agenda that any member wishes to call? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda with letter F, fold, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we will move to letter F now, which is approved purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the annual renewal of district membership with Wyoming School Boards Association for the twenty-three, twenty-four year in a total amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents. Do I have a motion? There's a second?
Okay.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I was just, was, I had a question about Wyoming School Board Association. I know they're associated with the Nash School Board Association. But I, I was just wondering if they've had any communication with us? Because many they, associations are leaving the national association. I believe nine already left the National School Board Association. I think there's another eleven of them contemplating leaving at the end of the year. And I believe the Wyoming School Board Association has mentioned that they have considered leaving just because of the national stance on things. And I'm wondering if they had made anything to us because I know other school districts have considered leaving the Wyoming School Board Association. If they do not, this, this franchise themselves from the Nash. That's why I'm wondering if they have made any comments to us if our contract was going to do with that.
I have not been made aware of any other discussion items related to that. I do know in December, and the other trustees, please jump in if you know more, stick pace, I'm just going off by memory, when there was controversy surrounding the National School Board Association related to a letter that was authored by the association, the national association that in turn, I believe, changed their leadership also. The new leadership was in place of, as of last spring. That new leadership, actually, the president attended our state Wyoming superintendent's association meeting in the spring of twenty-two. And I know that there had been a letter that was republished related to what their thoughts and processes were around the job of the School Board Association of National Level. I also believe at that time, the Wyoming School Board Association did send out a letter to all, and I was kind of looking on their website to see if I could find it quick. When that came out, there was a very strong letter from Wyoming School Board Association to the national organization during those events. I do not know and have not been privy to any conversation related to them since that time period. So I would be unable to answer that not completely, but I do know that they've, they've taken a pretty strong stance initially that they were not in agreement with that initial level letter to the, written by the National School Association.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the annual renewal of district membership in the Wyoming School Boards Association for the twenty-three, twenty-four year in the amount of twelve thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and ninety-four cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Any carries? Okay, now we move down to number two, old business, letter A, consider approval of proposed provisions to district policy forty-three, thirty, medical leave bank, as presented on second final reading. Recommendation is to approve the proposed provisions to district policy forty-three, thirty, medical leave bank as presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed revisions to district policy forty-three, thirty, medical leave bank as presented on second final reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Any carries? Letter B, consider approval of proposed revision to district policy fifty-one, twenty-seven, graduation requirements as presented on second final reading. The recommendation is to approve the proposed addition of a twenty credit diploma plan for Gosha County School District students as an addition to district policy fifty-one, twenty-seven, district required requirements as presented on second final reading. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kramer, could you go into kind of some of the ideas in terms of programs we have in place and the work study opportunities that are in place and what we plan on doing, I guess, down the road?
The surrender, we have a number of up to these four internships, apprentice programs and things with our current schedule. If a student, as part of getting credit for that, a student would have to have ninety hours in an apprentice or internship program. If they were only due to their schedule, only able to put that into one period a day, if they went every day for that semester, they actually would not be able to accomplish the ninety hours. They would actually have to go, which many of them have done in the past, go outside of school hours to get those credits. By opening this option up, we can back-to-back schedule them to have a larger period of time, two periods, which would be an hour and a half or even more than that, to go and be involved in apprenticeship program. We've also been involved with the University of Wyoming regarding a pilot program that has been incorporated into a course for students to take that also incorporates some of those entrepreneurial avenues that students can proceed down. And so it's our hope with that, that we can have a lot more exposure to different businesses within our community and provide more opportunities for internships and apprenticeships within that system. Also, in turn, we can have a focus, if a student fails a course in their freshman year and to plug that back into their course, course schedule is very difficult as they progress through schooling. When we're able to actually focus and have that latitude to adjust their schedule, to have them focus on the needs and get the support that they could be provided through either a study hall or a program in which they're working individually with this, with the teacher, we can have many different avenues that the student can proceed with. This does require them to enter into a plan initially during their freshman year and they would be reviewing this plan on a yearly basis. So they wouldn't start out with, as I enter my freshman year, I'm only going to take twenty credits. As part of that policy, you can see they have to have a full course schedule. So their plan has to incorporate a full course schedule, which would in turn exceed the twenty credits unless they find themselves in a situation where we want to have an opportunity for more internship and apprentice programs where that might just be one credit, but we're still offering it over multiple periods.
I guess what makes me kind of nervous about this, we touched on it just a little bit last month, and maybe we can talk about some more is if a, if a student was to leave the district and go to another district that required twenty-eight credits, they'd have trouble graduating later on in their career in which high school career.
One of the biggest factors there is that plan, as I thought about it a little bit more after that meeting. When we incorporate that plan, the only way a student would actually be behind is if they had many, many failures in those first two years. And it would be very similar to a student finding themselves in our current twenty-eight credit program that they're in a world of hurt if they start failing courses and need to make up for those. But if a student transfers in their following, what we have in, in part of that policy is the plan to have them have a full schedule. As long as they're following that plan, no matter where they would transfer, they would still be able to graduate. So I didn't think of that until after that meeting, but I'm very glad you brought it up because it's actually more minimal than I had actually thought about during that last meeting.
Okay.
I was wondering, since there's going to be two different diplomas, correct?
No, they will be the same diploma. There will not be any difference between diplomas.
So the student that puts out the extra effort to get the twenty-eight is going to have the same exact diploma as the twenty for their diploma.
Same, same situation that we have when a student graduates with thirty-two right now. They don't have any difference in the twenty-eight that we, that we offer.
If, if someone's going to go to college, will that diploma show the difference to the college of what they have referred?
Transcripts would always show the, the different expectations and requirements. Also, along that Hathaway, the Hathaway curriculum, we have different, more different levels of Hathaway instruction from where they can accomplish the lowest part of Hathaway or the highest part. In order to get into different colleges, it's not centered around specific credits, but the courses and also around the ACT prep. One of the things that would be very important in getting the very best ACT score is taking a course and having a full understanding of things like algebra and geometry as opposed to things that are not part of the ACT sports history. And that's really what we're having kids take when we have those requirements of those more credits is we're really filling it with some things that are not going to be conducive to that next step in their college preparatory program. I would much rather see them actually focus and have a strong understanding of the core and then also have opportunities to seek out those interests in those extension programs, Ag, Woods, Business. It opens up a possibility to actually have some on-job training and some things that might interest them and pique their interest, even in the area of physical therapy. Giving them time, if they want to go into physical therapy, having them actually be able to shadow somebody in that profession is much more open and conducive and actually would add to anybody's application for college as opposed to just the difference between a twenty-eight credit and a twenty or twenty-two. Most cases, like I had referenced before, a student will far exceed twenty credits. Twenty credits is the minimum, just as if right now, we have a number of students far exceeding twenty-eight because we still have those students who can get up to thirty-two credits. Each, if you're taking and passing each course and have a full load through that. So you're giving them a wider range, an opportunity to kind of focus their plan individually as opposed to a one-size-fits-all. The guidance from the council will be imperative in regards to making sure if they have the goal of four-year college or university, making sure they're staying on that path. But even with a twenty-credit diploma, they still would not, not still be able to access a four-year college or university.
Would they be able to get to like a, like getting to state, you know, to your college?
Oh, yes.
Baseball, five for that.
And as part of Plough River School, where we have seventeen credits, students still feed on to the E W C Avenue, or they could proceed even on to the University of Wyoming. If their courses, course selection and grades match up, it necessarily is not solely conducive to their credits.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving proposed revisions to district policy fifty-one, twenty-seven, graduation requirements as presented on second final reading, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? I didn't carry. Okay, now we move to letter number three, new business, letter A, which is consider approval of offering teaching contracts, offering contracts for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Their recommendation is to approve offering teaching contracts to Andrea Brunsfold as an English teacher at P E G S, Brooke Flattery, Flattery as a special education teacher at P E G S, and Haley Murphy as an elementary teacher at Southeast Schools for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. As well as Shelby Hamlin as an English teacher at Lingleport Learning High School pending certification for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and offering an employment agreement with Jimmy Courtney as a volunteer, as her funding social worker at EMS for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Do I have a motion?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of offering teaching contracts to Andrea Brunsfold, Brooke Flattery, Haley Murphy, Shelby Hamlin, and an employment agreement to Jimmy Courtney for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All those opposed? Any abstentions? I didn't carry. Letter B is consider acceptance of certified staff resignations. The recommendation is to accept, accept the resignations submitted by speech language pathologist Mary McCarty, Lingleport learning English teacher John Watson, and Lingleport learning special education teacher Ariana Watson, as well as P E G S R teacher John Klein, effective as of May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Do I have a motion? Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor of accepting the staff resignations for Mary McCarty, John Watson, Arianna Watson, and John Klein, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Item carries. Letter C, consider approval of request to rescind a teacher resignation. The recommendation is to approve the request from THS science teacher Melody Booth to rescind her resignation and to be reinstated as a teacher at THS for the twenty three, twenty four school year. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of rescinding the teacher resignation for Melody Booth for the twenty three, twenty four school year, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries. Letter D is consider approval of the Goshen County School District Number One Smart Start Plan as required for program compliance. Their recommendation is to approve the district's Smart Start Plan to meet federal S R compliance requirements. A review every six months in order to maintain and receive funding. Do I have a motion?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question about this. I've read through that plan and seems like it's really outdated anymore because there are so many things in there that are required that seem to be debunked and disagree upon and everything else locally, nationally, worldwide, a lot of things. It still requires masks worn, social distancing and everything, which has been so many things that have proven that were not true. And so therefore I think before we actually approved this, we need to go through it and do a complete update in mind.
Isn't that what's being asked is that we need to actually approve it, can we view it every six months? Is that now?
We get, we get an updated in any way, shape or form that we would like. It is a requirement to keep receiving the funds.
Right.
So yes, that is, can be part of the process. We can change it. We can approve it this evening with adaptations or changes that are suggested. There just has to be a plan that is not necessarily related to COVID. It is related to any type of situation that would require us to close schools. And have a plan in place for that.
So in, in the event that something like this was to happen again, something would be foundationally put in place where we could actually adapt to meet the needs of something if it was to actually take place. Is that?
Exactly.
And the other part of that is we have to do this a few more times. Is that correct?
Correct. The funds that we are receiving are set to expire in December of twenty twenty four. So we would need to have an update in December of twenty three and of June of twenty twenty four.
And we went through it and stripped out pretty much.
Any reference to COVID, isn't it?
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the Goshen County School District's Smart Start Plan as required for program compliance, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions? Item carries. Letter E, consider approval of proposed provisions to District Policy Fifty One Thirty Two Thirty One Point Two One. Student Discipline and Consequences Six Through Twelve as presented on introduction and first reading. Their recommendation is to approve the revisions to District Policy Fifty Three Fifty One Thirty One Point Two One. Student Discipline Consequences Six Through Twelve are presented on introduction and first reading. Do I have a motion?
Summoned.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions on this. I see that we totally eliminated all regulations, but conform to applicable law and the board policies. And with the new warnings, school board association, I believe that I want to give you this supporting here.
Can you do more specifically on which page you wrote that?
I'm on page one thirty nine, student discipline, that one where it's.
Yeah, yeah, you run student disciplines, need to know what the policy is running.
Anyway, the new, the new language in here, in the second paragraph, it said, the board administrators and teachers have a joint responsibility for maintenance of student discipline. And I, I'm kind of confused here because I didn't think the board was actually the ones that enforced the discipline. That was maintained by the superintendent teachers, principal, everything, because we're not in the hallways. We're dealing with those students or the teachers and staff. One on one, the only time the board actually gets involved is if there is a severe or strict discipline being involved. And so I don't see how we can be considered joint responsibility when it's not shared evenly. We only get involved with strict discipline policies. And so dealing with the parents, it says also the help of the pupil's parents would be valuable to the board and the school staff and maintaining discipline. And we don't, the board, I don't believe maintains the discipline. That is the staff of the district. We just get involved only on strict discipline. If something is going to happen where someone is either removed or expelled in school or something like that. And so I think the wording needs to change a little bit. It seemed like we are getting, getting too much in a maintenance part and the board should be in the maintenance of discipline. I think the wording needs to change. I don't, I don't, I'm just wondering why that would be even put in there and just got rid of all the previous language and everything seemed to work good before.
Well, and then that wasn't added. That was part of the old policy and the policy that you reviewed in committee.
Just right here?
Yeah, yeah. That was part of what we reviewed.
Okay, I'm just, what is the from W S B A COVID paper?
So I, okay, I see you're staying on there. So that was part of the, that was part of, I apologize, you're right on there. I didn't reference the Bob stuff. That was in relation to a suggestion what Copenhagen puts out in suggestion before the policy. That was part of actually in that third part of the committee, Marine, was that correctly part of that? That language. So that was added when we were in committee as part of the update, but it could have been easily reviewed, really overview because we didn't go over that first page very long. I somewhat disagree in the, I, I think the board does play a huge and has a huge responsibility, especially when we're talking about expulsion. But really I'm talking about semantics. So if there, if the board has hesitation in relation to that, I think they can, they can adjust that how they feel that. I, I do believe that expulsion is a significant tool that we have used and on a yearly basis, the board has had to make very difficult decisions around expulsion hearings. So I, I, I do believe that that, that is an appropriate statement, but if others on the board believe that they'd be more comfortable with some other language, I certainly would be open to that suggestion.
I was not on the policy case, so I don't know what conversation's going behind us, but the way that I read it. When it says joint responsibility, that we're going to need equal responsibility, that they're working in a partnership with those other interviews, help students, and then the next portion of that policy outlining exactly what happens. So that's kind of the broad strokes. And the next part of the policy is the more specific with each community, each incident, and how the board plays a little is how I look at it.
Well, and part of our responsibility is exactly what it is that we're doing now, is reviewing policy to make sure that, again, some of the, the, the wording, the actions taken are being fair and being, you know, appropriate to certain things that are happening. So our responsibility is not, it's from reviewing policy, writing policy to actually having the meetings for expulsion. So we are in partnership with, you know, our administrators and teachers to that extent.
The reason, what concerned me was the maintenance. I, I consider maintenance a daily thing.
What, what wording would you feel would be better?
Well, the administrators and teachers have a joint responsibility for the maintenance. That's what they were then. Was that?
So it wasn't the word joint, the action.
No, it was, there was just the maintenance part. The board doesn't need the maintenance of, of discipline. We are there for like when there's something major. I mean, you maintain, you maintain a car regularly. You do an overhaul, you have the, the next level of person coming in, the person to maintain is harder, probably not an overhaul.
So.
But you maintain, they don't have to, right? So by maintaining the word of voids, but by having that maintenance in place, we're avoiding being in a situation. So when we bring all of the maintenance and having that sort of explosion.
We don't tell us what to do on maintenance stuff every day in school. We don't do that.
Well, we review policy and that's a solid piece of maintenance.
But we're not standing in the hallways and we're not overseeing here. I, I consider that maintenance. That's what the teachers, they maintain, they maintain discipline in the schools.
So would.
We're only brought in if there's something serious. That's just my opinion.
So would you, would you, would you feel better if it just read, have a joint responsibility for student discipline? Omitting the maintenance of and just go with the board administrators and teachers have a joint responsibility for student discipline?
But I guess that might work better.
That's actually what I heard down on my suggestion. So thank you.
We're moving the maintenance of this call to the end of this call.
I just think it kind of puts us in a liable position on main parts of it, agreed it, the way I did.
Okay, so then you would need to make a motion to to add that. Okay, so would you like to make that motion?
Sure. So I would like to make a motion then that we take a change to the district policy, I guess, if you chose Fifty One Thirty One Point Two One. And the wording, the board administrators and teachers have a joint responsibility for the student discipline.
And take out that. That's all right. I just, because you can, on the maintenance, you can just remove those three words you can.
Hey, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor of approving District Policy Fifty One Thirty One Point Two One with the words, the maintenance of stricken, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries. Letter F, consider approval of proposed provisions to District Policy Fifty One Twenty One. Grading six through twelve is presented on introduction and first reading. Do I have a motion?
I shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I would just like a brief synopsis of how this has all went and where we're at.
It's been a long process and discussion as the board members who was part of that committee can attest to. Some of the features there are a percentage based system that correlates to letter grades and GPA. There are some other things that were not factors in a previous the previous grading piece. One of them was a syllabus for each course that will be provided to the administration and to parents to review exactly what the student, will be, what each syllabus will clearly state the standards and how all standards are being assessed. Credit is issued for grades sixty percent and higher. Report cards will reflect a letter grade of each course based on a percentage earned. Standard based progress report for common assessments is available online through Power School. Students' overall grade will be updated each time the teacher inputs a percentage score. Teachers must grade work weekly by eight AM Monday when eligibility list is pulled. Also, you'll remember before the grading policy did not reference eligibility. It is referenced in this one. And docs vary specifically about when that eligibility report will be pulled and actually what will result, or when will a student be ineligible and when they can regain eligibility throughout the week. And this will be pulled weekly as opposed to, it was more on a biweekly to even three weeks at a time, the previous one. One of the other big factors is number eight. That was another piece that would be not part of the grading policy previously is the ability to extend a course during summer school and allow a student, I'm sorry, that, that portion is, I want to go back to. That's still in that part. I think we are on the highest graded, so the highest grade a student can earn in that course would be a C. A semester course that is retaken during the school year will override the previous grade taken in that same course. That piece was not something that was previously in place in the grading policy. So if I'm a student in my freshman year who failed a core class like English one, and I decide I didn't want to retake that course, and the next time I retake the course during my sophomore year or junior year, I get a B that replaces that half that was there on the GPA and the transcript. If they're willing to take an entire semester, again, that they are rewarded then with that grade that they retook it with.
Am I just reading that wrong? Well, when it says during the school year, so they didn't get at any point.
So during the school year means like if I take it, so English, if I take first semester English one and I fail at my freshman year, but I choose during the school year in my sophomore year to take English one again for that entire semester, that results in whatever grade I receive. And earlier in that paragraph, it talks, the reason it kind of is, is a little bit quirky in references in the school year is because if you take it during summer school and you're higher than a forty nine percent, the highest grade a student can earn in the summer school program would be a C.
I would say that to be your freshman year, you guys can give it a fresh.
Exactly. Absolutely. Great question. Thank you for the ask of the paritation.
Any other discussion?
So it just occurred to me, I, I've read this, but it just occurred to me when I was reading it again. So I'm going, I'm under a common assessment retake process. So you have the, you have three right, trade and five areas. One is the work must be completed. Two is it may, must be taken within two weeks. And the third is they get together to actually create the plan. So my question would be if a student actually chose option three, would that have to include one and two?
That could be included. Most likely, what we, what we wanted to avoid was if there was an extenuating circumstance that did not allow students to take a common assessment within that two week window, that it just doesn't set them up for being a failure. Because if we are saying that that first common assessment, they miss and they fail and something happens within that structure that either through this teacher's schedule, the student's schedule or any of those things, it can't be retaken within those first two weeks. That there is an opportunity through a formal plan process that teacher and student can agree on and important, and an opportunity for that retake. It doesn't necessarily have to be granted, but it's there as an opportunity for that. As part of that agreement, one of the key things that might be in place that be eligible for common assessment retake would be number one, work from the unit must be completed. That's actually usually on any plan that I've conducted is usually numero uno. Because that's an integral part before you're eligible to take that. Now, we have so many different extenuating circumstances for kids and what happens outside of school. And that opportunity, if there's a large amount of work that has to be completed, what is realistic? In some cases, yeah, two weeks is more than realistic to be able to do that. In other cases, there might be some things that and the time period in which it falls don't allow for that. And so we're giving the, you know, that plan to kind of make sure that we're covering our bases and giving kids an opportunity to get the best grade that they can achieve.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed revisions to district policy fifty one twenty one, grading six through twelve is presented on introduction and first greeting. Please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions, item carried? Letter G, consider approval of proposed revisions to district policy forty three oh two retire retiree retire is presented on introduction and first reading. Uh, the recommendation is to approve the revisions to district policy forty three oh two retiree retire. As presented on introduction and first reading, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I do have a question. Was this then because of the teachers specifically or are there other reasons to conveniently retire?
No, the the reason, one of the biggest factors is we exceeded the Wyoming retirement system significantly. Uh, Wyoming retirement system had it set for quite some time to thirty days and we had had it set in six months. Because of our pool of candidates continuing being. Less than what it was in previous years, uh, we want to make sure and have options available to us when we have. Uh, situation, this is now reflective of the earlier agenda item because that person had not actually by re. By taking back that resignation, they never officially retired. Uh, and so that that does fall into this one, but it does bring to light some other situations that. Uh, we just want to be prepared for, especially those hard to fill if we have a situation where. Finds one of them have and other particular areas that uh can be very difficult. Uh, that we have more tools in our toolbox and are not just specifically restricting ourselves. Especially when the state organization is saying, uh, this is what we expect.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the proposed revisions to district policy boarding three oh two retiree retire. As presumed on introduction and first reading, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions, item carries? Letter H is consider approval of contracting with S H I for district Microsoft licensing renewal for the twenty three twenty four school year. The recommendation is to approve contracting with S H I W S C A Wyoming software vendor. Uh, number W Y dash A A O seven S H one I two O one four. For district Microsoft licensing renewal for the twenty three twenty four school year in the total amount forty two thousand fifty nine dollars and seventy six cents. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving contracting with S H I for district Microsoft licensing renewal for the twenty three twenty four school year, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions, item carries? Letter I, consider approval of contracting the Star Autism Support Incorporated for Professional Development Services and Online Resources. For the twenty three twenty four school year. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Star Autism Support for Professional Development Services and Online Resources for the twenty three twenty four school year. From July first twenty three through June thirtieth twenty four in a total amount of twenty two thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. And this is funded through titled six B funds. Do I have a motion?
Sounds.
Is there a second? Okay, any discussion?
So who does this include when they talk about? Who's who's including this training?
So those special education staff.
Okay.
And if there's any other staff that would be interested that are affected that would have students that would necessarily be in their class, they're also allowed to.
Okay, so those online resources, though, they're they're open for all.
Yeah, anybody who would have a need for utilizing other sources.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of contracting with Star Autism Support Incorporated for Professional Development Services and Online Resources for the twenty three twenty four school year. Please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions, item carries? Uh, letter J, consider approval of contracting with Brooke Carson LLC for autism and behavior consulting services for the. Twenty three twenty four school year. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Brooke Carson LLC for autism and behavior consulting services. From due July first twenty three through June thirtieth twenty four, not to exceed sixty five thousand dollars. Uh, this is funded through I D E A, uh, six B funds. Do I have a motion?
Sounds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Isn't this kind of redundant with what we just did, or what's the difference between the two?
Oh, very good question. So there are two different uh organizations, one is the online and one is the uh. Contracting for behavior consulting services. I know Trina is online and I don't know if she would have anything to add to that.
I can, if you'd like.
Yes, please, Trina.
So the first one, the Star Autismism is an online resource. And so um kind of a curriculum to use with special education students, it's called what we. Uh, discreet trial training, so we purchased materials, um, every building has at least one kit. But then they also have the online resources and the training is on how to use those materials. Brooke, um, Brooke Carson LLC is, we actually have consultants that come in district to work with. The special education teams, the teachers and the para educators on setting up programs um for students, how to structure the classroom. Um, they've done several um four day trainings for us to get staff um trained on how. To implement programming with students and then they also help us problem solve um around individual students. Uh, one of those consultants lives in Fort Collins, so she's only two hours away and she's in district. Um, usually at least once a month for a couple of days and sometimes twice a month and in fact, they. They're here this week um meeting with staff or next week meeting with staff, getting ready for students for next year. Were there any other questions?
Thank you, Trina.
You're welcome.
All those in favor of contracting with Brooke Carson LLC for autism and behavior consulting services for the twenty three twenty four school year, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions, item carries? Letter K, consider approval of contract with ESU thirteen Meridian School for Student Placement Services. The recommendation is to approve special education contract with ESU thirteen for day program services for student number O six eight one. In the Meridian School for the twenty three twenty four school year, not to exceed sixty four thousand six hundred and sixty six dollars. With additional occupational therapy services at a hundred dollars per hour and speech language services at eighty four dollars per hour. Uh, this is funded through general fund reimbursable special education. Do I have a motion?
Sounds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Will you be able to speak to the location of the school?
Yes, if I can click buttons fast enough. Um, so the school is located in Scotts Bluff. And it's part of the ESU Educational Service Unit Team, um, there in Scotts Bluff.
No, absolutely, thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of contracting with ESU Meridian School for Student Placement Services. For student number O six eight one, not to exceed sixty four thousand six hundred and sixty six dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions, item carries? Letter I, consider approval of contracting Cathedral Home for uh for children for student placement services. Uh, the recommendation is to approve special education contract with Cathedral Home for children. For educational services, room and board and therapy services for student number six nine nine six. For the twenty three twenty four school year, not to exceed one hundred and eighty three thousand one hundred and fifty five dollars and eighty six cents. This is funded through the general fund reimbursable special education. Do I have a motion?
Sounds.
Is there a second?
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor of contracting with Cathedral Home for Children for Student Placement Services. For student number six nine nine six. Uh, not to exceed one hundred and eighty three thousand one hundred and fifty five dollars and eighty six cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any extensions, item carries? Letter N, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of teacher and student materials for Eureka Map from Great Mines. The recommendation is to approve the purchase of Eureka Map materials for teachers and students. In transitional kindergarten through seventh grade from Great Mines in the total amount of forty four thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars and forty six cents. This is funded through the general fund curriculum. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Again.
Any discussion?
Will this be a yearly expense for the Eureka Map?
So this is one for the seventh grade as we move ups, there will be another eighth grade one as we can progress. They appear and then we need to determine there it is a kindergarten program and then we need to see. What we want to do going into ninth through twelve, how much should that?
Are there materials, materials that go to school every year?
That is correct, there are some supplemental materials that do. Uh, that are replaced each year, uh, because actually they're cheaper than actually copying. Uh, so we can actually buy the books, they can actually copy. Yes, great. No, it's a great question, I'm glad you asked.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of teacher and student materials for Eureka Map. For Great Mines in the amount of forty four thousand six hundred and ninety four dollars and forty six cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions, item carries? Letter N, consider approval of renewing district and building student intervention programs and professional development for the twenty three twenty four school year. As presented. Uh. Number one, Renaissance Learning in the amount of twenty seven thousand five hundred and ninety one dollars and twenty cents. Number two, Read Naturally in the amount of two thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars. Number three. Chella, Zella, in the amount of six thousand fifty nine dollars and twenty eight cents. Number four, P E B C in the amount of sixty four thousand. Number five, Zern in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And number six is Lexia four five in the amount of ten thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Uh, the recommendation is to approve the intervention program renewals for the twenty three twenty four school year is listed. In the total amount of one hundred and twenty three thousand seven hundred dollars and forty eight cents. This is funded through the general fund, curriculum and federal funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Uh, first question, is that a map program?
That's correct.
Um, why do we have that if we're going to do Eureka Map?
So that is a supplement to Eureka Map. And so those are supplemental materials that include online programs. That are very similar to, uh, if you're familiar with I X L, which is another program that we've used. This is a supplemental material that acts as a reference to the work being done within Eureka Map.
And the other question I have is, do we have to vote on all these?
So as it's written, uh, you you would within there, um, you can modify and. In motion. You can also table a motion to have more information, uh, you can uh. Proceed with eliminating one and then bringing one back in the table. Um, the the piece is open to the board and how they want to continue with that. There is a motion on the table, uh, that would need to be amended or before that vote or anything else would be taken.
So, uh, question I have, if we don't approve this tonight, how will that affect us moving forward?
I think I'm gonna just check with Marty, if it's this month or next month, I don't believe there is anything going on. That would need to have anything as long as it was in place by July.
I I believe that's correct. My my understanding is that many, many of these items on here are not print. In nature or or hard consumables that we're receiving, the um. Item for the Eureka Map, um. The the forty seven thousand dollars of um Eureka Maps, the item M. Those, those were items that we felt like we needed to get those um. Ordered, I'm not knowing what the ETA on those what were, but um many of these others are online. Um, things that we could wait till July and I think we'd still be fine for the start of school.
Mr. Gerbey, do you see anything on that list that would, that would not be able to wait till the July meeting?
So I have a question, uh, these programs, okay, so kind of two part, the renewals.
Correct.
So my question is, is these are programs that um our teachers pay.
Correct.
I I think that's, that's important to know. Um, so. Okay, so I guess I'll wait to see what it was in the minute.
Is it, is it possible to like to make a motion then to uh? Just there's just one in particular, uh, number four, that. But I would like to make a motion to have it moved to a separate vote. Or a separate item, if possible, to vote separately?
So that would require a second, so you'd make a motion right now, then you'd have a second, a motion and we need to take a vote and do that.
We have a motion to remove number four P E B C from this list. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I ask for some clarification on that? Are you asking it to be voted on individually or be completely removed or how? Uh, would, is that going to be another separate item, add another vote just for clarification?
Yes, that was my idea was to remove it from the particular uh group of. Programs to be voted on and have it voted on separately.
Thank you for the presentation.
Okay, there's a motion on the table to remove number four P E B C uh from this. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of removing number four from this list, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed?
Aye.
Any extensions, item carries, P E B C for the. So then do we need to go back and vote on the whole list?
The motion that's on the floor is.
Okay, so now we go back to the original motion, which is to approve renewing district and building student intervention programs. And for for and professional development for the twenty three twenty four school year. Uh, with P E B C poll number four. All those in favor of approving renewing district and building student intervention programs and professional development for the twenty three twenty four school year. Please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? Okay, so now we will move on to renewing P E B C in the amount of sixty four thousand. Do I have a motion?
Sounds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
May I reference something, or go ahead, Justin's first one. I I would, I would reference uh to possibly get more information individually from teachers who receive those services. Uh, and employees who receive those services in regards to professional development. I know from my experience that has been something that has. Been a very strong relationship with Scott Murphy, who is the representative that we've been dealing with for professional development. Um, and so making a decision and hearing uh what their experiences have been to cross reference. Anything related to website materials, I think would be very important.
I move that we table this item until the July meeting.
Second.
Any discussion?
Um, is there any chance that we could? Scott Murphy, is what you said, he could be brought in to? Uh, address the board?
I'd be glad to contact him and reach out to him.
So. That's an option. However, if you can. Um. Then what? I mean, I, I, I wanna hear, um, from the teacher's perspective. So I, I'm okay with, with, you know, the request to bring him in. But I think I would like to be able to hear from the teacher's perspective as far as. Their, um, their side. As well, so.
I will also encourage those teachers and administrators who have received those services over the last sixteen years, uh, to come. And, uh, provide information related to what their experiences have been. Thank you for that suggestion.
I, I'd kinda also like to know what other school districts around the state? Is there, I can check that service.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to table, uh, voting on renewing P E B C. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling this item until the July meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter O, is consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of additional Spiro robots and related materials? The recommendation is to approve the purchase of Spiro robots and related materials? For district classrooms from Spiro in the total amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Uh, this is funded through the Wyoming Digital Learning and Virtual, Virtual Education Grant Funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Again.
Any discussion?
I have a question. Fifty-one thousand, five hundred members. How many robots did that block because we just bought forty-five for ten thousand, five hundred dollars?
That's actually on page one eighty-two. Talks about the craft kit. The individual classroom pack. The. Code mats. The bolt power packs. And the courses one through three. On that itemized. The most items that we're buying are, are the Little Bits RBR topper. And we're buying fifty-four of those. One of the factors that we have, the additional funds. Um, as part of this. Is due to the resignation of our instructional facilitator. So our instructional facilitator was part of this grant. And by having her resign, then we were still going to contract for the school year, but because we're not replacing that position. We have those funds that we were employing her with and not replacing that position to still be extended. So that's the, that's the reason for the expenditure and actually we can have more individual programs, so different schools don't have to share. Items, they can have their own individual, especially with our extension opportunities. Uh, on Fridays, this offer, this offers a lot of more accessibility to those items as opposed to. Maybe only getting them one every three, one every three weeks. We're gonna have situated at each school.
D, did she give you an instruction on anything?
Yes.
That's correct.
Well, we had the training also integrated with what we were doing on, many of the teachers already used it. Cause we bought them last year too, but we had the unlimited supply, so many of the teachers that already have, have received the training.
We have teachers already that have the ability to.
Yep.
That's. Wondering where you're going.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase? Uh, of additional Spiro robots and related materials for district classroom from Spiro in the total amount of fifty-one thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-two cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter P, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars? For the purchase of Spiro robot blueprint build kits? The recommendation is to approve the purchase of blueprint build class packs? From Spiro for the eight rover robots included in the bug robots? And accessories order in the total amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-seven cents? This is funded through the Wyoming Digital Learning and Virtual Education Grant Funds. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the purchase? Uh, blueprint build class packs from Spiro and eight covered rover robots in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars and forty-seven cents, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter Q, consider approval of purchase exceeding five thousand dollars for the purchase of forty-five Lenovo tablets? For programming additional Spiro robots? Uh, the recommendation is to approve the purchase of forty-five Lenovo tablet, tablets from Blum USA. Uh, formerly Troxel Communications for the purpose of programming the additional Spiro robots purchased? In the total amount of five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars. This is funded through the Wyoming Digital Learning and Virtual Education Grant. Do I have a motion?
We'll move.
There a second?
Question.
Any discussion?
I have a question, um, on the, on the tablets and the, and these, uh, robots. But do we have maintenance on a breakdown?
I would put Mr. Harper's, our new tech director on the spot, but I know that he is not prepared here with this purchase. And so I won't put him on the spot in his first meeting that he's attending. Uh, I would have to give more information for you to check back with, uh, I know Mr. Fuller was involved, uh, in that purchase too. And I know, uh, Mr. Gerbi is avoiding my eye contact, so I won't actually ask him either, uh, to speak to that since he. He probably was involved in the purchase, but not necessarily involved in conversations related to that, but I can find that out for you.
Yeah, uh, is there a warranty? With all these and everything, cause I know like the other computers that we had purchased previously, um, for the school district. We got the extended warranty repaired and everything like that on those, so I just wondered if there was anything on these as far as. Maintenance of those computers and updates. I'm sure there's always gonna be an update every time.
Yes, there certainly, I would agree with you. Uh, one of the things I know that we've had is both of those items have been purchased in the past and we've been very pleased. Uh, with how they worked. Uh, and that plan already being in place for those, so I would, I would lean towards the fact that. They, they've had that discussion in relation to what that maintenance looks like. I wouldn't be able to specifically speak to that, uh, this evening.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of? Uh, approving the purchase of forty-five Lenovo tablets? For programming additional Spiro robots in the amount of five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter R, consider approval of renewing annual maintenance support agreement with Long Mechanical Solutions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. The recommendation is to approve the maintenance? The support agreement with Long Mechanical Solutions for District Building Automation and HVAC Systems? Controls? For the twenty-three, twenty-four school year in the total amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. This is funded through the general fund maintenance. Do I have a motion?
I saw move.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of approving, renewing with, um. Long mechanical solutions for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year in the amount of twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter S, consider approval of renewing the twenty-three, twenty-four school district? Property liability and vehicle insurance premium with school risk retention, retention program. The recommendation is to approve the renewal of district property liability and vehicle insurance premium? For the twenty-three, twenty-fourth school year with school risk retention program? In the total amount of six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, one hundred, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and forty-two dollars. This is funded through the general fund. Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
I guess.
Any discussion? All those in favor of renewing the twenty? Two, twenty-three, twenty-four district property liability and vehicle insurance premium, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter P, consider approval of bid received for Southeast School's water line project. The recommendation is to approve contracting with Rocky Mountains Sand and Gravel LLC of Cheyenne for the Southeast School Water Line Project in the amount of two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Here's, there's the line that goes out and around and there's basically one that broke.
These ones would come from?
Major maintenance.
Any other discussion? If I may, I just wanna add, this gives us that redundancy out southeast to remember, to remember that we only had water in part of the building? On a pipe break that we had, uh, this will provide redundancy within that system. So if we do have a pipe break, it provides a circle around the building, uh, that actually if we do have that situation, same situation happen. We'll still be able to supply waters to the entire building, so this is a really good thing considering, uh, the problems that we just recently faced.
Any other discussion?
Was there? Just the one bid from Rocky Mountain and then Devon's? Land on Megan a bid and they couldn't get it in their schedule, so there's. Just really just the one.
That, that is correct. I, I also was told on Monday by, um. Kobe Romy that there may also be an opportunity for some value-added engineering that, um, he thinks that. Um, we may be able to reduce this price slightly. The other thing we're, um, based with, based with is wanting this project to be completed before school starts. So, um, we are in tight timeframe, which is going to increase the price. It's, it's. It's not gonna increase the price from what was bid, but that doesn't affect the bid price.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the bid received for Southeast School Water Line Project? By Rocky Mountain Sand and Gravel LLC, in the amount of two hundred and four thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter U is consider approval of authorizing district business manager to pay fiscal year-end bills by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The recommendation is to approve authorizing the district business manager to make payment of all fiscal year-end bills? No later than June thirtieth, with information presented in the July eleventh regular board meeting. Do I have a motion?
I saw move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor of, uh, approving the authorization of district business manager to pay fiscal year-end bills by June thirtieth, twenty-three, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? Letter B, consider approval of audit agreements with McGee Hernan Pies LLC. Uh, so it's in, in our memorandum, we have before us this evening, there are two different options. There's a three-year option and a one-year option. So I would entertain a motion on either option, then we can discuss. Do I have a motion?
I have a point of clarification before I make a motion, can I go to have a motion? Um, at some point, and I don't know who applies to this, in the past, there was reference that we cannot compare to each agreement instead find other boards. Is this not all in that?
So we can make multi-year agreements as long as there is an ability to pull out of that agreement without consequence.
Then I need to motion the insurance with three-year agreement with McGee Hernan Pies.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can you rephrase that motion? I, I didn't catch it. What was it?
The three-year agreement.
Yeah, there was a second.
There was a second, okay. Any other discussion?
Uh, Marcy, you had mentioned something about, uh. Was it the state that audits us every three or four years too?
The independent audit is required by state statute, though we have that completed yearly. Department of Audit also comes and visits school districts and they come every three to four years.
If, if that falls into this timeframe on the three-year, will that? An issue?
It, it makes no difference, um. What, what you're gonna see is that, um, Department of Audit is looking at, um, specific? Items associated with funding, so they're looking at ADM, at-risk? Um, reimbursables and that type of thing. Um, what, what you're gonna have with what McGee Hernan Pies is looking at, they're looking at things like. Um, independent, um, internal control. Um. Safeguards, they're, they're gonna be assisting with building the financial statement and all of. Um, generally accepted accounting principles, so you really are getting two different services.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of approving the audit agreement for three years with McGee Hernan Pies LLC, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any extensions? Item carries? We will now move into letter F, which is topics for discussion. Does anybody have anything they would wish to discuss?
Right, uh. I was just sitting here thinking about, um. So next year's schedule. Having Fridays off. For the most part, um. So I got to thinking. Like, there was this. Something in the paper about the city buildings, they didn't have enough employment to come paint the buildings. It just made me think that. That the kids out on Friday. It's kinda gonna take a whole community effort to. Yes, there's other things we can do with the students and. Other ideas and avenues. For Friday, so I was just encouraging. You know. It's gonna take a community-wide effort to. Help that go be a positive thing. What my question was is, um. Does anybody know, like, could students? I guess they could get a part-time job then on Friday. Cause I mean, they're. They're not, they're not in school, so would there be anything against that? Um, but.
Hey, I think what, what would happen is. It, it's gonna depend upon the job that they're looking for in that. If, if the job is classified as extra hazardous, as far as workers' comp is concerned, there's gonna be an, an age of eighteen minimum. And that's gonna be your, your custodial jobs and, and those types of things. I'm gonna guess food service probably would be applicable to, to those of a younger age and maybe like grocery store and that kind of.
Another question like for summer, does the school district ever hire? Kids under eighteen, like summer maintenance, lawn maintenance, like the city does, like? Or no?
The, the school district has an age limit of eighteen and that's because. The, the mowers are classified as, as the extra hazardous under workers' comp. And that age of eighteen is necessary.
Does the city have the same thing?
Yeah.
Have they always?
Um, no.
It's in the last few years.
High school kids used to work for the city.
But because of the issue with their.
We have to pass on.
Okay, but we have to pass on.
Any other topics that any board member leaves there? Okay, so. There's been some interest uh person from several board members uh to. At least look into our um public comment period policy. Uh during meetings, so what I did, I have our um current policy that we have in place, which is the short one. Uh and then the one, the long one that's next to it. That is what the Wyoming Legislature operates under. So I just wanted to provide those just for comparison purposes. Um for any future discussion we might have over that, but that is um. Just gives gives everybody a chance to kind of compare and contrast, so.
And then the other sheet that was handed out along with that is the leadership policy.
Yep, yep. So I mean, I obviously I'm not. Asking for any input or any action or anything like that, but I just want you guys to be aware of. How our policy compares to the state legislature policy.
So you're just asking?
I just I just wanted to put more information out there for everybody, so that they were familiar what the what's one policy, our current policy for public comment is. So. Pretty informational, Carlos. More so than anything.
I would assume, I'm just guessing here though, like on a national scale. Especially after COVID. Probably have a lot of school district revised their. Public comment policy, I would assume. It's.
It has been a regular topic at the Wyoming uh Superintendent's Association. Uh just asking how and what other districts have done in relation to looking at theirs, uh because there is um. There has been recent case law that has supported the ability for boards to. Mediate speech uh to what they feel uh is conducive to holding a business uh meeting within within the. Presidents of the public.
So. As you can see, our policy is very. There's there's not a lot of specifics in there, so. I don't necessarily think it's a bad thing, but I did just wanna provide both. Um so that we have something to compare with.
This would be something because it is a board policy to have or policy committee. Which does have three board members sit on it, have a discussion centered around that. If that is something that the board would like to at least. Uh look into our next meeting would be uh in August. Uh so it wouldn't be something that would be very quick and fast-paced on how many changes, but it would. Uh bring it up for further discussion to see if there would be any interest in moving forward in that direction.
Anything else anybody wishes to discuss? Okay, with that, I will move down to letter G, which is future meetings. Uh number one, there will be a special meeting on conduct a boardwork session for district strategic planning with the WSBA on Wednesday, June twenty first, twenty twenty three and six PM. The next regular board meeting will be Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty three at seven PM, and will include the annual district budget hearing. And with that, I will go down to letter H, the superintendent's report, and turn it over to superintendent Draker.
First item I have up there. Is the update on staffing. And I'm just gonna. And so the peach area is an area in which we have not filled. Um we currently have uh seven positions. Uh with this evening's um resignations that are there. Uh we do have uh four leads. Uh on those positions uh that hopefully will have some action in July, maybe, and that we'll be able to take action and filling those. Um. I have not had a chance today to check in reference if this is more uh than last year or around the same. Based on my memory, I think it's it's similar, uh but that would be more than what we had the last two to three years have been. Um higher than what we were experiencing before that. Just gonna scroll down. We also have uh the positions for classified staff uh of retire resignations also. And I do believe that that is a little bit higher than what has been in the past. Then on enrollment numbers, let's switch over and. And our enrollment numbers, uh this would be from the last month that we had. You can see uh we did not have declines, um either maintained the same enrollment. Uh or increased or slightly. The yellow is just a a point of what. Not a full even student equivalent difference. So you can see there was uh slight declines with those rolling points. Uh we did have about two students less, but. Um that's that overall that were that attendance throws into that and all of that. Um but you can see still finishing up significantly higher than previous years. And and I will go over to the annual update. I do not have a slide for this one, but this is in your packet, the annual update. Uh of the drug testing. Uh the overall one that I look at uh is our positivity rate or tests. Uh our positivity rate for this year was point nine percent. Uh there was the difficulty of having um. We did not conduct the analysis of the number of tests that we have in the past uh due to a shortage of staffing. Uh from the support safety testing, uh but it is conducive to the percentage, the national average this year, this four percent. Uh positivity rate last year was two point one percent.
That's that's a random test of the student athletes.
That is correct. Anybody who was involved in extracurricular activities, not just uh athletics, but anything involved in fine arts. Uh any of those programs uh from organizations to uh take part in that testing.
I had a couple of questions with that. And it they don't have to be answered tonight. We can't get them, but I was wondering the cost per year for that um. Also, the number. Maybe of school districts around us that have. Mandatory drug drug testing policy. I think you answered. I was wondering who the company was that administers it, Sports Safe, but so. I'm assuming they're not here from town. They come in and do this and. Just on their schedule, like they have it all computerized or this?
They they um. Provide the employee locally. Uh who is also most likely contracted with another hospital. Uh or organization, healthcare organization, and then they contracted them to division where it's a company, individual schools. And then they provide us with the random list uh as we provide them uh with information. Because as part of that, they have information uh to conduct the contacts with the parents if there is a positive test also.
So in this, I think I know the answer, but it's only students, it's not coaches or staff or?
Correct. The only employment that. Is tested on a regular basis are transportation employees. Or those who are. Certified uh and are on the list to be substitutes, but like myself, I'm a substitute bus driver. I'm part of that list, and so any employee who is in that, whether they be a teacher or a coach, they are part of that home also.
Yes, for transportation.
Just for transportation, correct.
And do it. And then my last question is, how long have we been? Doing it.
I'll look to more of the veterans to tell me when when years those were when we instituted that. Two thousand and nine? That was all my questions. Okay. Not check out that information for you to have with next week. And then technical tax revenue is my last one that I wanna talk about. Um. I did get information shared with me that I think uh is important to kind of make sure we have. Information related to that. Um. And you'll know this solar project that is uh potentially a a proposal out there. By Yoder, and I'm gonna share. And the documents open. So the first document that I'm going to share with you um. Is the estimated tax revenue. For. Now the technology is not speeding up on me. So I'm just gonna give you the numbers, actually, opposed to showing them. Uh so the initial estimated sales tax revenue uh for the county for the Goshen Solar. Uh project would be eight million one hundred one one thousand three hundred and thirty eight. Uh thousand, uh that goes to the different entities uh within the county. The county government is one point six million. For Larry, sixty four thousand, Lagrange, one hundred and twenty one thousand, Lingo, one hundred twenty nine thousand. Forington, one point eight million, Yoder, four thou- forty thousand six hundred and seven. And then we also talk about the thirty year annual estimated property tax revenue. Uh the county government. Uh the annually would receive three hundred and thirty two thousand five hundred and eighty. Ocean County School District is where it places to do us directly. Uh number one would be nine hundred thousand seven hundred and thirty eight. How this would also affect us is those members of the rec board. Um that we know specifically, I believe, our rec funds right now on a yearly basis are around three hundred. Thousand, is that correct?
Yeah, I heard it said two.
Yeah.
A little under that last year.
About about two hundred thousand. Um this would be an additional ninety one thousand per year. Uh that the rec board uh would be able to disperse uh with that project. But wanted to make you aware of the top tax revenue and those information out there. I know that that is uh something that is something. Uh that is discussed out in our community, but I think having the numbers uh is an important factor. Uh within that and how it directly affects schools and then other questions certainly can be further discussed outside of those. Uh but it does pertain to us and the school district and how it affects us.
I would add one thing to that is it is a lot of that is projected uh. So. Just for everybody to take that with a grain of salt. Other thing they don't put out on papers, how much it's going to increase everybody's personal property taxes that has. Like water is land like that, so. It's not all roses.
Thank you, Mr. Hager. I appreciate that.
Okay. Nothing else from the board this evening, we're good.